Thank you. On January 8th, 2013, the Pravasi Paridus was held in Cochin. All of you know that. Our Honorable Prime Minister of India made a wonderful statement. It was reported as Dr. Manu Hogan Singh said that overseas Indians are served as a bridge of friendship and cooperation between India and their adopted home abroad. The government will do all that is possible to deepen their connection with India and advance their interests. While honoring their achievements, the government will also seek to facilitate their travel, business, education, and make it easier for them to be a part of life in India, enjoy due rights, and participate in India's economic development. The government has launched an insurance scheme for workers established welfare funds to our embassies for distressed Indians and created mechanisms to help vulnerable women abroad. All these are beautiful statements that we had during the last Pravasi celebration. And we are also fortunate to see that it was held in this, in Cochin. Most of us are from Kerala. Today, I would like to congratulate all of you for coming together, for taking your time to be here on this beautiful Saturday afternoon to discuss and come up with some solid proposals that we can use to make our life easier. There are some struggles our community have been going through the last couple of years. OCI card is a wonderful, wonderful scheme and that was a step closer to dual citizenship. Back in the years 2005 and 2006, we, the Pravasi community in North America and around the world were jubilant, were so happy, we were so enthusiastic to promote, to support the OCI card scheme. Myself and many leaders who are here conducted OCI camps to promote that scheme. Unfortunately, in 2010, the Sardaral issue came and we were very disappointed because it was not proposed or included in the initial OCI card scheme. Now, most of us were not aware of that. Then came 2012. A number of other changes took place or introduced and one of my friends, Dr. Srithar Kavil characterized that as arbitrary and capricious. So, that has been happening since 2012. The immediate issue that as Pravasi Indians, that we face ER mainly the we issue requirements imposed upon us during the last couple of years. Then, the problem with the passport surrendering or renunciation, that has been there unresolved. We are still highlighting that. And also, we have some issues with regard to IDs, identification for numerous purposes while we travel back to our homeland, which we love and care for India. We are Indians, even though we obtained the citizenship here or in Western countries or in Australia or any place out in the world, we are still Indians. We love our mother country and we care for our mother country and that is the main reason all of us are here. At this time, I would like to request the former president of this Kerala Cultural Association of North America to come and welcome you all. Thank you, Mr. Vargis Chingathur.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen and distinguished guests. I'm in this country nearly 40 years and I took the citizenship just like most of you for various reasons, but I'd heard we are still think India is our mother country and we have dreams of going back quite often or we are, you know, we have problems, that's why we are still stick up here. It's not an issue faced by people of Indian origin taking citizenship in this country. It's a problem for all the Indians, all the people of Indian origin who took citizenship in various countries in the world. Therefore, when we put our heads together and think about this situation, how it might affect us in various ways. Most of us may have inheritance back home, we may want to leave it for some good purposes. Unless we have a solid footing there, a right to claim that inherited wealth, at least a free, a freedom of going there, visiting to, visiting our own mother country is a, is a noble step the government can do for us. About 10 years ago, me and some of our friends who are here, we attended a group campaign conducted by Kerala's Majam and we all took OCI card and thought that was a lifetime visa to go to India whenever we wanted. Certainly, it was a great joy for me to obtain that even though there were so many steps in the application process. Now, my passport, American passport is almost expiring. I was under the impression and assurance that I could easily get the visa, lifetime visa that was given to me could be endorsed in the new passport by paying a certain amount as fees. But now, I come to know that there are 19 or so, so much steps to get that new visa endorsed in my new American passport. Certainly, it is an inconvenience. Moreover, I do not know where my old Indian passport is. Within these 40 years, I might have changed at least three or four times my residence and I cannot find it. That's, and some of you may face even graver issues to solve this particular issue. Therefore, it is good for us to join together and think or request or approach the Indian officials and express our concerns. We love our country. If you don't love our country, you don't want a visa. You will be like anybody else. You could just go and come back applying for a, you know, a one-time visa to visit. That's not the issue here. We belong there. Unfortunately, we are here because our mother country couldn't afford us or give us a better life in those days after master's degree and all, went around searching for a job, couldn't find one. Certainly, most of us are lucky here. We help our relatives and friends back home. Most of us are trying to do a lot of things back home, helping others. We want to do the same thing. Therefore, we want that, that assurance from our Indian government, all assistance in making this process as easy as possible, as easy as viable, so that it wouldn't hurt the unfortunate immigration, immigrated community all over the world. Therefore, this meeting is certainly will do so many good things for us, at least we will be heard by the, you know, Indian authorities and this meeting is highly needed and whoever came here today, you have contributed already in, in, you know, conveying your pulses, your views to the Indian government. Therefore, all of you are heartily welcome. You are welcome here. This is our community's place to assemble and function for the benefit of, of the Keralaites, the immigrants, community. The Kerala Cultural Association is very glad to appreciate you for coming and welcoming you wholeheartedly to this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vargis Chingathur. I just want to reiterate one more thing. This is a town meeting. Town meeting means the northeast, I mean, the New England province has a rich tradition of town meetings from years, I mean, since for centuries. And this is a continuation of that kind of a town meeting where we exchange our ideas, views, and come up with solid proposals. Okay, today, we are so fortunate because of something that happened yesterday. Yesterday, our honorable acting CG, CG called me and she was very helpful and she wanted to know more about today's meeting and this is one of the 100 meetings we planned in North America. And I explained that these are leaders of our community assembling and we come up with ideas and proposals that will be transmitted through our embassy or the Indian consulate or through our ministries, our parliament members and that way we can obtain some solutions for our grievances. So, the Honorable CG told me that the consulate will send to officials from the Indian consulate and we welcome that. And today, I like to welcome Mr. Dakhia, Dakhia, and also Mr. Permal from the Indian consulate and our community appreciate your presence. And this meeting, this is going to be a little, the agenda is going to alter a little bit since you are here timely. Most of us have questions. If we present some questions, would you be willing to give your try to answer that?
We are dealing with OCI.
Yeah, okay. So, so that is one thing. So, I'm going to ask two more people to say a few words. The Gujarat community leader, Mr. Dilip Chowhan is here, he's going to, and other people are also coming. And also, Dr. Srithar Kavil is here. And I want to recognize the president of the, this organization, Kerala Cultural Center, Mr. Samsi Koduman. And these are all officials or leaders of various organizations. We even have the Fokana former leader, Mr. Srivam Prile from all the way from West Bombay. So, we have friends and community leaders from different parts of United States. This is not a, just like an ordinary meeting, this is, the leadership is here, we have some questions, we would like to present you and please try to answer them or you can give your contact number, then we can follow that way. And also, the CG has explained that when the new CG, after the new CG takes over, they offered to set up a meeting. So, that is another positive step. I, I know and all of us know, they cannot do much, but they can convey our feelings, our demands to government of India. Am I right or yes?
That we can, certainly.
Okay. So, I would like to ask Mr. Dilip Chowhan to say briefly, one minute and followed by Dr. Srithar Kavil.
My name is Dilip Chowhan. I am a chairperson of the Gujarat Samaj of New York. I'm sure you must be knowing about the Gujarat Samaj. We have around more than 3,000 registered members. Also, we represent more than 60,000 Gujarat community in the New York City. So, also, I would like to thank Thomas Uman for inviting and we are part of the Gujarat Samaj also included in this event. Actually, last week also, we went, we sent the representative in New Jersey when we had a town meeting. Also, we are planning the same way. Whenever you have some time, we want to organize the town hall meeting next month to the Gujarat Samaj of New York. Thank you.
Thank you, Dilip and Dr. Srithar Kavil.
Good afternoon and welcome, my friends and leaders of the community. I'm delighted to be here primarily to dispel some myths, some beliefs. OCI card is nothing. It's a false piece of paper sold to you for $350 or so by the government. When the parliament legislated, the intention was solidly good. Intention was to confer a kind of permit visa, re-entry permit to people of Indian origin who have taken citizenship overseas. It got watered down to nothing but a permit to stay in India for 90 days or more. Most of us do not need it. Permit to stay in India for 90 days or more are meant for people who are returning to India. We are not returning to India. We want to visit often and on when we need them. Now, when we, when we look at the law of USA or India, the intention of the legislation is supreme. If a rule contravenes the intention of legislation, the remedy is a public interest legislation. And some of us are in touch with people in India, laws in India. I don't have the standing to file a case in India because I'm not an Indian citizen. But somebody will file a case in India and challenge the rules. Rules are written by some bureaucrats who very often do not understand anything. Most recently, I was in a team who met with our honorable ambassador at Washington DC. She was extremely noble, she was very frank and said, "I am not a party to it. All that I can do is to convey whatever you say with all the seriousness to my channel." So, Mr. Honorable Permal is a good friend of mine. My advice to him is stay away from this. These are very controversial things. And Dr. Diviani put her mouth, opened her mouth and she is about to get into trouble. She's trying to defend, you don't have to defend the OCI card. OCI card is not devised by you. This was done by, behind the scene by the Department of Homeland, the, the...
External Affairs.
Not, not External Affairs, Home, Home Minister. And who do not understand what a wonderful service overseas Indians are giving to India. Last year, we remitted 70 billion dollars, the top of the world. Given the turbulence in Saudi Arabia, 2.5 million people in trouble of Indian origin, 576,000 people of Kerala origin in trouble, all will be displaced, I'm telling you, because the rules are very strict in Saudi. The visa doesn't match, match what you're doing. The employees are going to be punished. Employees are asking everybody to go back. If engineer is doing some of the work, employer is asking engineer to go back and exodus of people, government of India is not being given a simple courtesy of a negotiation Saudi Arabia. They do not care because Saudi Arabia wants to bring into their fold 5 million people from their own community. Retraining scheme is coming up. Through a friend of mine, I had an email, "Can you come down to Saudi Arabia and retrain people?" They are willing to pay anything because they have to retrain these people who cannot be digested into working force and replace Indians. They are a kind of bedouins with no education, nothing. How can I retrain? How many can be retrained? How many American consultants will go to retrain? That's a different aspect. The aspect that I'm going to bring out is this, this OCI card has no teeth, has no value. Please dispel from your mind, it has anything to do with visa, nothing. I have a passport and a visa and I keep going and coming back until the 60 days rule was withdrawn. Why did they put the 60 days rule? You must ask the bureaucrat, he won't even know. They, they create rules. Rules are created in a country like India, in a country like many countries simply to create difficulties in the path of the people, also to raise money, we call, in Balialam, we call kora. This exactly what's happening. Corruption will be rampant if you create more and more rules. Somebody, a friend of mine, most recently was held up in Kerala because she thought she's a medical doctor. She thought she had the OCI card, that is a visa. After three, four hours of negotiation, I don't want to say what could have happened, she was let into the country. This should not happen. I don't have to stand at the mercy of a little officer who is sitting at the counter and request him, "Please let me go because I thought OCI card is an OCI card." So, what we have got to do is, we have got to continue our fight, very peaceful legal fight. And lot of organizations have gone to New Delhi, memorandum has been submitted to Home Minister, the External Affairs Minister for, State Minister for External Affairs, Prime Minister Sonia Gandhi, everybody is getting it. I would request one tactical plan. If you can send 10, 15, 20, 30, 40, 50 emails to, emails of your friend woman, we want to inundate. Our plan is CB, CB is working on a major program. Anybody who wants to contribute to CB, give, Alexa, send money, I'm going to send $50 to CB because we want to put up a server, a, a excellent program to send out millions of emails. Delhi, the, the person who wrote the program in Delhi said, "If you send a million emails to Delhi, Delhi will crash. Delhi will not work on that day." We know that. They will not be able to rework the machinery, the computer system for about 24 hours. I am hoping that better sense will prevail at a time when Indian government is facing foreign exchange crisis. You know what is happening to gold? Gold is plunging. It'll take only three months before the gold touches 1,200 rupees. Kerala will be a place, it will be affected. Devaluation of the wealth of India, rupee will go to 60. And the deficit, we call current account deficit, per the illustrious Finan Minister of India will increase. And this is a time when Prime Minister, what Prime Minister said has to be true, he should facilitate building relations between these jewels like you, Pravasis, who are sending money to India, who care for India. I'm here only because of the love and affection we have for India. So, please help us to help the cause of India. You are leaders, you could communicate among yourself and tell them the truth. This card has no value. It has got to be changed. They can simply issue a card saying that this is a permanent visa, multiple entry visa, if they want to renew it 20 years, whatever it is, it's no problem. But don't tell me the information which I don't have about my father among 19. And I wrote to the bureaucrat in Delhi that, "Do you remember what Krishnamanin said? Paternity is not a certainty." How much of information do I have about my mother and father? I have no idea. Don't ask me those things among the 19 things. Ask simple five questions and let it be renewed if you have got to renew it. Another irrationality is that some bureaucrat in Delhi said, "At age of 20, you go through a biologic reformation. At age of 50, your face changes." There is absolutely no medical biological truth. This is stupidity and irrationality of the highest nature. Will they learn this lesson? I want them to tell me a medical proof that my face changes. I had the, my mother had white hair. I had white hair at the age of 36 or so when I came here. I came at the age of 36. I didn't certainly change my face when I became 51. How does this bureaucrat think about it? Who is this guy? I want some enlightenment in Delhi. I don't mind my friends here to be in between, please. Your friends, Permal, I met the day he came and please, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Srithar, myself, we conducted a number of meetings here in New Jersey, Philadelphia, all that. I would like to ask Apostle Reverend Wilson Jones to say two words, then we go into, would you mind, I'm going to have two chairs here, please come here and please, yeah, two chairs there, okay?
Come here, let them sit here.
Yeah, yeah. She was let into the country. This should not happen. I don't have to stand at the mercy of a little officer who is sitting at the counter and request him, "Please let me go because I thought OCI card is an OCI card." So, what we have got to do is, we have got to continue our fight, very peaceful legal fight. And lot of organizations have gone to New Delhi, memorandum has been submitted to Home Minister, the External Affairs Minister for, State Minister for External Affairs, Prime Minister Sonia Gandhi, everybody is getting it. I would request one tactical plan. If you can send 10, 15, 20, 30, 40, 50 emails to, emails of your friend woman, we want to inundate. Our plan is CB, CB is working on a major program. Anybody who wants to contribute to CB, give, Alexa, send money, I'm going to send $50 to CB because we want to put up a server, a, a excellent program. because we want to put up a server, a, a excellent program to send out millions of emails. Delhi, the, the person who wrote the program in Delhi said, if you send a million emails to Delhi, Delhi will crash. Delhi will not work on that day. We know that. They will not be able to rework the machinery, the computer system for about twenty-four hours. I am hoping that better sense will prevail at a time when Indian government is facing foreign exchange crisis. You know what is happening to gold? Gold is plunging. It'll take only three months before the gold touches twelve hundred rupees. Kerala will be a place, it will be affected. Devaluation of the wealth of India, rupee will go to sixty. And the deficit, we call current account deficit, per the illustrious Prime Minister of India will increase. And this is a time when Prime Minister, what Prime Minister said has to be true. He should facilitate building relations between these jewels like you Pravasis, who are sending money to India, who care for India. I am here only because of the love and affection we have for India. So please help us to help the cause of India. You are leaders, you could communicate among yourself and tell them the truth. This card has no value. It has got to be changed. They can simply issue a card saying that this is a permanent visa, multiple entry visa. If they want to renew it twenty years, whatever it is, it's no problem. But don't tell me the information which I don't have about my father among nineteen. And I wrote to the bureaucrat in Delhi that, do you remember what Krishnamanen said? Paternity is not a certainty. How much of information do I have about my mother and father? I have no idea. Don't ask me those things among the nineteen things. Ask simple five questions. And let it be renewed if you have got renewed. Another irrationality is that some bureaucrat in Delhi said, at age of twenty, you go through a biologic reformation. At age of fifty, your face changes. There is absolutely no medical biological truth. This is stupidity and irrationality of the highest nature. Will they learn this lesson? I want them to tell me a medical proof that my face changes. I had the, my mother had white hair. I had white hair at the age of thirty-six or so when I came here. I came at the age of thirty-six. I didn't suddenly change my face when I became fifty-one. How does this bureaucrat think about it? Who is this guy? I want some enlightenment in Delhi. I don't mind, my friends here to be in between, please. Your friends, Perimal, I met the day he came. And please, thank you. Thank you. Dr. Sridhar, myself, we conducted a number of meetings here in New Jersey, Philadelphia, all that. I would like to ask Apostle Reverend Wilson Jones to say two words, then we go into, would you mind, I'm going to have two chairs here, please come here and please, yeah, two chairs there, okay?
Come here, let them sit here.
Yeah. For pretext of this meeting, we are going to have our voices here, okay? Whether through our consulate or through communication, internet media. Today we have, and we have the chief editor from India abroad, Mr., one quotation I just want to say. The purpose of the Overseas Citizenship of India Scheme is best articulated by the High Level Cameri Report chaired by none other than L.M. Singhvi on the Indian diaspora which concluded that the grant of dual citizenship to certain members of the Indian diaspora with certain safeguards would facilitate the contribution of the diaspora to India's social, economic and technological transformation.
I live in the United States for more than four decades now. I'm a Pravasi. And I want you to know that even though I have taken citizenship in the United States many years ago, I still love the country where I was born and brought up, where I got my education. And I appreciate what Mr. Thomas T. Human and Dr. Sridhar Kavil and all the community leaders are doing in behalf of the Pravasis who are suddenly faced with so much confusion about this OCI card. I remember when we had that surrender issue with passport, about passport, the old Indian passport, that no one asked us to return. Mr. Thomas T. Human and many former and Fokana leaders, we all went to the consulate and had a demonstration there and the surrender fee was... The surrender fee was phenomenal. A family of five, if they had to surrender their passport, had to come up with a few thousand dollars to surrender, surrender, surrender their old passport for which we had, had a hard time to get it in the first place. So that was achieved by the common effort of Pravasis in the United States. And with this OCI card issue, I believe that our united effort will bring some result and our voices should be heard in New Delhi. Doesn't matter who is in the, in power or which party is in power in, in, in New Delhi. But I want you to know that over the last four decades of American life in this country, I have been contributing to the economy of India and all of you, all of us are. And I hope and pray that, that our voices will be heard and we will see some positive actions from the Foreign Ministry and the Homeland Ministry of India in favor of the Pravasis who contribute so much for the progress and development of modern India. It is Abraham Lincoln who said, government should be of the people and by the people and for the people. And the purpose of the government is to serve the people. And fortunately, we who are from India know that our government is, do know, government is not always for the people. Even though they make promises, the promises are not kept. But I believe that these kinds of town meetings and joint actions by the Pravasis in the United States and Canada can make a difference. I salute those who have taken the leadership in calling such town meetings. God bless you.
Thank you Reverend Wilson Jones. Now we are going to entertain some questions. And Mr. Arun Dhakia, who handles the OCI, applications in our consulate, will try to respond to you. And one, a couple of people in the Nassau County Human Rights Commission, Mr. Sunny, George Thomas, he is somewhere there. Just okay. And I don't want to spend time on acknowledging anybody here. Okay, so but you know what, we will, okay, you can ask one question and a follow-up, okay? Then at some point we will say, I will have to say, that's it, okay? And make it, don't make any baseless accusations or anything, but be courteous and you know, pointed questions, you know, okay? Thank you, and this is the time to, if, Mr. Dhakia, you want to say something, please? Yeah, come on. We are happy to have you say.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Well, we, yesterday suddenly we came to know that there is a town hall meeting is going to take place here. And our acting consular general suggested that we should also be part of the community in oral situation, oral talking, oral, to know their ideas, what kind of, in case they have something to say and which we can make note of and we can convey to the consul authorities in India. So primarily we have, we and Mr. Perimal have come here to listen to you. You are told to go and basically to listen to the community leaders, whatever they have to say. And then note it down, note it down, and then pass it on to the authorities in India who decides who formulate these policies related to the OCI and other issues as well. So before we start taking questions, et cetera, let me first explain basically what the OCI card stands for. Mr. Sridhar just told me that is false. Of course, it's no, well, to an extent he can say so. But basically first we have to understand what the OCI card, what idea or what you are thinking of the OCI as such, what benefits you would draw by getting an OCI. If I reflect you, sir, it's not ninety days a stay permit in India. If you have an OCI, you can stay as long as you want to. There is no prohibition, there is no limitation of the period of stay. So, number two, in the initial stage, when the scheme was introduced, it was by some method called dual citizenship. So by calling this dual citizenship, naturally people got excited. Yes, we can be Indian as well as foreign passport holder, et cetera, et cetera. But frankly speaking, it's not a dual citizenship. Because the constitution of India does not provide any Indian to hold a parallel citizenship of other country while holding the Indian nationality as well. So the, in the moment one becomes a foreign national, he, he is obliged, he is obliged to surrender his Indian nationality, Indian passport. Well, people may or some, may or may not be knowing this thing, but this is a fundamental truth. The moment when somebody has acquired a foreign citizenship, he seizes to be an Indian national. And the first question, the first thing which he should do is to surrender the Indian passport. Surrender, well, there are many misconceptions also about the surrender of the Indian passport. It's nothing, well, there are fees, of course, you see, government business is not unknown just by coming and doing, some fees has to be paid for this. So it's not a, in my view, because I am dealing with this issue for last one year. Now I am not dealing with this, so I have been transferred to some other place. And my colleague, Mr. Saravat, is the person who is dealing with the OCI. But he's done well, so ACG told me, Mr. Dhakia, why don't you and Mr. Perimal, who has handled some consul issues, go and listen to the community leaders, basically what they have to say and let's see what, whatever we can do to help them. So this is the thing. So then, number two with OCI, while applying for OCI, now government had formulated this rule, till twenty years of age, when you are twenty years of age, so you must get it reissued. As he said, because that's the physical or whatever. Features because when you are child or something, whatever. I'm not, I'm not such a, but that's, that's what the government has formulated the policy. Then before, then if you are twenty-one to forty-nine, you don't have to get the card reissued. Again, I don't see the reason why, but as he rightly said, that bureaucrat don't know. But I'm, I'm very, then after fifty years, you are not supposed to get it reissued. You can carry all the three documents. OCI card means one OCI card booklet and the OCI sticker, visa sticker, which is stamped on your US passport. On the, on that, if you have some OCI, you must be holding some OCI card. It is written lifelong visa, lifelong visa. It's a lifelong visa, so, but it is related to the validity of the US passport, of your passport. If the passport expires, so of course, when you, if you are above twenty-one to forty, you can carry your new passport and the OCI card and the old passport which has the OCI stamped on it. You can travel. But for, it's, it's in your own interest to get it re-stamped on your new passport so that you don't have to carry three, three paper documents. So to make the things easier, well, let's say government will come up with something, a wider, just say. But this is what the practical, this is what, what is the system at present is. So I'd be happy to take any question if you like, and I'll try to, I'm not in the present, but I'll try to explain in the simple way, yes, please.
You, what about after fifty years?
You don't have to, you don't have to get it reissued, no.
But that's what the condition that try to say is, you must, after fifty years, you must reissue, get the OCI card reissued to the new passport. That's what the, 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 don't say to have said, say.
You, you, so.
It says you, you may or it says you must.
Yeah, it says. It says, there are three categories. First, up to twenty years, okay? Then from twenty, or forty-nine, and then after forty-nine, after, so you don't have, only once you get it issued.
What it says is, twenty years or below, anytime you change passport, you must reissue it here.
This is a, yeah. Only once, only once, only once, after fifty years, yeah.
That is a problem. That is a problem, you have to get it reissued.
Yeah, yes, once, yeah.
That is a problem, you are talking.
Good, I will, I'll take a note of it, your problem. Okay, okay, enough, Mr. Yeah.
Dr. Sridhar Kavil stated that we are having facing problem of entering India. Now, Doctor, Mr. Dhakia said that there is no problem. Without entering, how can we have, how can we stay ninety days or sixty days or endlessly? Without entering, how can we stay? The problem is entering India. So I am a senior citizen, I am over seventy and my passport expired in 2010. I sent it to, to the address mentioned and they said it has been outsourced. And so I should send it to the outsourcing agency. Okay, I sent it to the outsourcing agency. Three times the passport was returned for one reason or another. Three times. So I decided stop it, no more giving money. Oh, the, the problem was they keep the money and send the passport. Okay, I decided pin the passport, pin the old passport to the, to the US passport and end the problem. So I'm traveling with pinned, with the old US passport where the lifelong visa is.
Stamped, yeah.
And, and the new American passport. So my question is, is, is this practice still valid?
Yes, it is very much valid. You have to carry your OCI booklet also.
Yeah, OCI.
Yeah.
So we can travel with this OCI card and the old passport, which is condensed sticker and the new passport?
Yes. Okay, one more, one more thing, yeah, yeah, Sunny, I, yeah, yourself, please, yeah. Yeah.
Said there after fifty.
Yes, you were confusing, I understood.
At your fifty, you had been issued with the OCI card, once.
Yes.
Okay, I think I got the OCI card after my fifty.
Yes.
I still have to.
No, no, no need.
Okay, that is another answer. Okay, now one more question. Is due to all this traveling problem, the...
Is due to all this traveling problem, the Indian, American citizens, they have American passport, visa, everything. Did you able to cancel this OCI card?
Yes.
You can cancel, what I had to do?
You simply have to fill up the form, there is a form on the OCI. Well, for everything, for every request, you see, the service is there, you have to surrender.
There is a number one solution for this.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I am thinking, so you are, a form in the system?
Yes, it is there, yeah. Okay, Sunny.
You go once in two month, three months.
Renunciation.
They are asking about the old passport, Indian passport. For example, I took the American citizenship in nineteen eighty-five. And at that time during the oath, they put a basket up there.
Yes.
After the oath, they told us, put your Indian passport in that basket. I think all of us put that Indian passport in that basket and get the piece of paper that they give it to you. Indicating that you are a new citizen of the major states. And these guys are asking about this old Indian passport for.
No, you don't have to. You simply have to fill up a, there is a form which says lost of Indian passport, whatever. You simply have to fill up the form, attach this with it and that's it.
Attach with the what?
With the application.
You mean this form?
Yes, with the form.
For the renunciation?
For the renunciation, yeah.
And there is a fee for that?
Yeah, fee for that.
I live in Florida, my consulate is Texas.
Yeah, I saw.
And life is one of the worst consulate. That's one of the worst consulate, serving in service. Worst in the sense of providing service.
Are you saying New York is the best? No, I'm just kidding. They are here, they are here.
But from Florida to Texas, Houston, you know, it is not that easy to go all the time.
You simply have to mail it, you can mail it. Yeah.
Thank you, and George Thomas, please.
My question is, can you explain what is reissue? Reissue means we had to go through all the process again?
It's a, yes, it's a, it says, it's, no, not two, three months, it takes about a month. Because the cards are printed in India.
Why don't you do it here?
No, but what is the government policy, we cannot print the cards here. We cannot print the cards here. The cards and the OCI booklets, reissue means you must, you are applying for a reissue because your passport must have expired. Right? So the new card has to have your new details of your newly acquired passport. We receive it and we send it to Delhi, again it goes to Delhi. And they process it, they print it, they dispatch it by courier and then the moment we receive it here, then we are delivered. We don't print it here.
It says lifetime?
Yes, it's a lifetime.
It says lifetime?
Yes, it's a lifetime, yes. It's confusing, I understand your point, but it's a lifetime.
Do you have to pay the two seventy-five?
Yes, but only three time I mean, three stages there. Yeah, yeah. No, no, it's a twenty-five dollar only, second time for reissue, it's a twenty-five dollar.
And also one more question about the renunciation, I don't, I don't have my Indian passport.
Okay.
So how much the fee for renunciation about?
When did you become?
American US citizen in two thousand one.
Two thousand, you have to pay twenty-five dollar.
Only for twenty-five dollar?
Yeah.
If I, if I don't have that?
You don't have, but you have to give affidavit?
If I have the Indian passport, how much?
Well, I don't, we have to see till which time it was valid. There is a penalty, yes.
But if I don't have the passport?
Yeah, there is no penalty. That's it. It's a, it's a top secret. Okay, Thomas and Gorgis please, please, everybody please go ahead, okay, sleepy.
So the children, eleven, thirty years old, if they travel to India with their old passport, they could carry the three pieces?
Well, the rule provides as I explained to you, below twenty, you have to get it reissued each time you acquire any US passport.
How to do that?
Yeah.
I tried to apply then, it says on the report, it's not mandatory. When I fill out the form, it says it's not mandatory, it's up to you. That's why it says on there.
But the instruction says so. As I said.
So what if I mean, it's not mandatory?
It is mandatory especially, but it is mandatory, we cannot say anything, it is mandatory, that's what the rule.
But day before, a friend of mine.
Okay, Sunny.
He didn't have the passport, old passport and he completed the affidavit. But when the host and consulate, they asked for the, for a police report, travisa bit and simply denied it. Then he, and somebody called from the consulate called and.
Well, you see, depends from, depends from person to person, normally what I am saying, what we are doing here, this is the.
Do we have not the, it's not a rule? It's a front person, the person has to change.
No, it doesn't change, it doesn't change. The police for some kind of affidavit, affidavit, notarized affidavit should be suffice.
Do we have to submit any documents for, for the lost passport?
No, affidavit, they notarized.
They notarized.
Notarized affidavit. An affidavit, that has to be notarized, submitted.
You don't need any police report?
No, no. Nothing, that's what Mr. Dhakya said.
It is not stolen, it's not stolen.
Right. So, okay, right now, Mr. Dhakya, let me ask you one to ask a follow up. So if something like that happens, if travisa says, like in Houston and also a couple of people did call me. Even something happened here also and the CGG garden involved with that. If they are insisting on getting a police report, what we are supposed to do in that case?
No, only affidavit, notarized.
No, 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 if they are not going to take it, they say like, they need a police report, they insist on that, they rejected the application. What do we do? We approach the consulate at that time?
Yeah, that's.
Should we do that?
We have made a note of it.
Right.
And we shall convey to our consulate.
Then another one, somebody has a question. Yes, sir.
Right there it says, also for an African who is fifty years of age or older, OCI documents must be issued.
Yes, once, once, only once.
Only one, but it says because the other one is his time.
If you obtained it after fifty years, you don't have to re-get a reissue.
You obtain the OCI card after fifty years and then you have a new passport.
No.
As he said, as he said, no, listen, as he said, below twenty.
Each time.
No, no, listen, the language, you must. You have a new passport and you have to have the new, OCI card to be transferred to a new passport. For fifty years or even months, you have to do it or not.
Only one.
But once you have to do it?
Yes.
But you are saying?
No, but in case you have, you have obtained the OCI, when you already crossed fifty years, then you don't have to. No, 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 no. So, you know what, I just please take a note of that, okay, no, no, I just want to clarify because, okay. Please, 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 okay, please listen, okay, one other time. This question, they are going to take note of this question. Because there, it appears that there is a contradiction on the travisa side. So they will take a note of that and they will try their level best to address that issue. If we will keep, continue to be in touch with the consulate and come up with a clear cut answer, yes sir, please.
I have a passport which was issued ten years before, when I was about fifty years. And the OCI card was issued later, the passport has already expired because it is ten year limit. Now I acquired another passport and the new passport is contained in the visa. If I go to India, they are going to send me back or?
No, no, you can carry your old passport which has the UJ sticker. Your newly passport because the old passport is expired, it's no more valid. But for entering into India, it has the UJ sticker on that, so you have to show that. And the OCI card, OCI booklet and the new, your valid passport.
So we have to carry three pieces?
Yeah, three.
One more thing, when I applied for the OCI card, the consulate never asked for my old Indian passport. I never renounced my citizenship. Now, if I had to renew my OCI card or I have to get another visa, they are asking for renunciation and the penalty for that.
Yes, sir, this has been introduced recently, September two thousand ten, September two thousand ten has been made mandatory now. That all Indians must renounce their Indian citizenship who have acquired, after acquiring the foreign nationality.
Why they didn't ask for that?
Before, no, it was not there before.
It was before, long time before whenever a person.
It was voluntary, you see.
When the dual citizenship, I mean the foreign citizenship was offered to anybody out of India, any from any other country. They supposed to surrender their passport. But when we applied for the OCI card, they never asked for the old Indian passport. Now, why they are putting a penalty on that? Because of their fault, when they have asked, when we applied for the OCI card, they should have asked for the, for the Indian passport, original Indian passport. They didn't ask for that, they didn't ask for renunciation certificate, they didn't ask for a surrender certificate. Now they are asking to surrender the Indian passport and pay the penalty. This is not my fault, it is the fault of the Indian consulate.
May I have your name please?
Yes, sir.
Okay, may I have your number, yeah, may I have your name please?
My name is Chhot Samoil.
Mr. Samoil, see, as I told you in the beginning, the moment an Indian national becomes a foreign citizen. He is supposed to get his, he is supposed to cancel his Indian passport on his own.
Okay.
On his own, without asking, without anybody's instructions or guidance. Because Indian constitution does not allow an Indian citizen to hold a parallel citizenship for another country. So the moment you acquire a foreign nationality, it is in your own interest to get, to get that, to get your passport canceled and get a sender certificate. So, it was not implemented so vigorously earlier, but now it has remained mandatory. That we want to, and the government policies to ensure that all the Indians who have acquired foreign citizenship must renounce.
My question is not surrendering. My question is when I applied for the OCI card, application for the OCI card is not foreign citizenship. So when we applied for the OCI card, they never asked for the.
No, no, I understand. No, it was there. Let me explain something, okay, I have, you know, one thing I have to say and I really want to appreciate your answering questions. Because he has all the patience and Mr. Dhakya is a wonderful, wonderful person and also Mr. Parimal. They are actually keeping their cool in answering the question. No, we are here to listen to you, as I told you, please. I appreciate, one thing I want to clarify that, that is more of a policy matter. They are executing the rules and regulations already put in place. So, the consulate cannot change any of that. For us to demand those rules and procedures to be changed is going to be something that we are going to be deciding. On the basis of a community movement or a provasi movement or as an organizational demand. So that is totally apart from what they can actually contribute, okay? So they can, that is well taken and they will take a note of that, CB please.
So I have a question about the renewal of OCI card. You said at the age of twenty and age of fifty, you had to renew the OCI card. What about a person who is getting OCI card at the age of ninety? After all these no ending step or one process, getting the OCI card at the age of ninety, does he need to renew that OCI card at the age of twenty again?
Well, that's what the instruction says.
Okay. People are very much concerned about all these stupid rules, please.
Yeah, certainly, we are, yeah, yeah, we are hearing this, yeah, yeah. No, we don't dispute that, but we say it in a very polished way. Sure, sure, we understand, we understand. Any other question that?
One suggestion, I comment, maybe we can decide one thing, it is like international rule by the US also, till fourteen years. Till fourteen years, American passports also renewed within five years, the same reason. So why don't we all agree together that till fourteen years, the same rule should be applied here and then continue as it is?
Yeah, yeah, we go into that, we go into that.
No, I mean, can we agree together so that they can present those?
No, see the thing is like, okay, that is a, there is a bigger picture here, okay?
The problem is not renewal.
No, renewal is not the issue.
Problem is asking for more documents, more additional documents, same documents.
No, why renewing, you simply have to give your sender certificate, nothing else. Okay.
Asking for all the other things, including surrender certificate, no?
Yeah, yeah.
All those things are there, two additional documents are also needed.
Nineteen, before it was sixteen, three more steps you have to fulfill. And that's, I remember, reset requirement, reset requirement.
Those who have OCI card, because they will check for us. You don't need that.
No, no, the reissue requirements are here, okay?
I mean, those who already have OCI card, they shouldn't be asked no question because they already question us with all the application and everything. Now next time they have to renew it and no shit, that's all.
That is exactly our position. Yeah, I have make, I have taken note of it.
That's what, I don't know me what. And another thing, if we don't, OCI card is not valid for us, we don't need it.
We don't need it.
We don't need, we don't want NRI accord and everything.
Okay, that, okay, that is.
As an important point, you can put it there.
Yeah, this guy, I can, but I appreciate, I appreciate your irritation. Yes, Sunny, yeah.
Okay, in my OCI card, there is shown lifelong, it means what?
Lifelong.
I also got from lifelong, it means what?
Nothing. Means till you are alive. But it has to match with your other foreign documents, the passport, that's the point.
When I apply, when I go to make new passport, why should change to that passport, this passport? Because that is hardly valid for lifelong.
Yes, I understand, as I explained to you, this is the, this is the policy which was formulated at the initial.
That's why we.
That's why we are, now we are discussing it and we are trying to find where, so that we can get rid of this at this.
I recommend for you that, whatever existing facility, the OCI, let it remain the same way. The new one, let it get the application as the new rules.
Yeah, this is another idea, yeah. These are good proposals, Sunny, yeah, any more questions, yeah, go on.
The basic problem is the home ministry is taking all these decisions. The external affairs ministry.
Implementing, implementing, you only, we are the implementing people.
Actually, you, you know the situation, but you are not taking the decision, this is the problem.
That's the problem.
Home ministry, because.
These are deciding, these are thought.
We cannot do anything about it.
No, no, you can't change it, you can't change it.
Basic thing is that.
Yeah, that's it. So, anything more? Any more question, one thing I just want to bring your, your attention is, when the OCI card was introduced. We were, please listen, we were told that this is an improvement over the PAO card. PAO card was visa free envy. You didn't need a sticker in the American or the foreign passport to travel to India. At the, it's right here, I have the copy, it's called visa free envy. So, at that time, our community demanded to use that stamp, the visa free envy stamp. On the second page of the OCI card. We are still waiting for that to be implemented. Once that happens, there is no need for any sticker, any reissue, none of that nonsense, if I may use that phrase. That's right, okay. Thank you, Dhakya, I thank you very much, sir, our community. Thank you very much. So, that is basically, that it says here, this is the, this is the stamp of the PAO card. I will read it to you because you have to keep this in mind when you speak to our friends, the ministers and the parliamentarians who come here and we. and we, we entertain them or whatnot. When we go and speak to the ambassador and the government officials, all of us must keep this in mind. The stamp on the PAO card must be the visa portion of the OCA card. It reads, "The holder of this card is entitled to visa-free entry into India for the duration of its validity, provided that it is accompanied with a valid passport."
That's it.
That is all it says. This is problem solved. Once the government put the stamp on the OCA card, this whole reissue problem ended. So that is, that is one of the demands that we are putting on, on that signing sheet. We have those demands. We narrowed down those demands into three. And the copies of the memorandum and the petition are on two websites, three websites actually. One, chage.org, two, Pravasi Action, three, the former political forum. So any place, even Fokana, everybody has this information, this petition on website. You can go in there, sign it, and once the chage.org, one, CB is here, he developed that. That goes, hundred signatures collected, then the memorandum, the copy goes to R. J. Mathai, the honourable secretary. Good thing he is from our place. So what happens is, he, so far he has gotten maybe over a dozen. We need to, we have over eight hundred thousand OCA card holders. Right? Over eight hundred thousand. Eight hundred thousand people here around the world have eight million or even more. People in India who are voting rights. If we cannot cast our ballot, our relatives, our friends, our next of kin, our parents, brothers, sisters back home can enforce this through democratic process. That will happen, okay? And right now, we are greatly appreciative of the Indian consulate. And after they leave, we are going to have a meeting here. I mean, conclusion of this thing. And you can make some solid suggestions at that time and we will move on.
Are there any passport-related issues?
Okay, please, okay. This is a good opportunity for all of you to ask any passport-related questions. And here, Mr. Perumal will entertain those questions, please. Okay, come on, yes.
My passport was cancelled when I got an OCA card.
Okay.
Is there any improvement or enunciation?
Yeah, that again relates to OCA.
OCA, no, passport, isn't it?
It's a passport, passport was cancelled.
No, I'm only talking about renewals, last passports, all those things.
Dheeraj, can I answer?
Yeah, sure.
Cancelled? See, if your passport has, again, it's again, you say, it's a control over. If your passport has the cancelled stamp, you still have, you need to apply for an enunciation certificate. You will be charged only twenty-five dollars. But if it, if it says cancelled on acquiring of US citizenship, then you don't have to pay anything. That, that, you, then you don't need to apply for an enunciation certificate.
Okay.
These are already done. Two kinds of steps already done.
And also he gave us a job secret. He knows your passport, you submit an affidavit. Job secret, government, sir.
Don't tell and don't show. You go, you figure it out, right?
Okay, sir. Perumal, okay, please, sir.
There's a case coming up. If you surrender an old, old passport now, they will put penalty over the years and over the years. Okay? Please don't tell the truth.
Okay. Thank you.
No, but just erase that from the video. Okay, now, let me ask you one thing. Now, this is an opportunity, just ask the questions briefly, briefly and, you know, make, don't give us a story. Just ask him, whatever story, I mean, a question to ask. Passport?
Okay, what about you?
Passport, OCA is done, passport.
Only passports.
OCA card, you have these new application fees or what?
Just trapping it, then general going.
Two fifty dollars, actually.
It's going to be...
Do you pay again?
No, before. Even if you take, you go to the OCA and take OCA, your same thing, you have to go. It is always OCA.
Okay, let's move on to passports, Sunny. Thank you. Any passport questions? Application for passport? Indian passport? Yeah, yeah.
To surrender the Indian passport, you have to go to the visa or to the Indian consulate?
No, it has to be at the consulate, Indian consulate, yeah.
I think that, yeah. Thank you. Okay, one more question, yes, sir.
Can we get in the same thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you let us know? Can we send in somebody else or we have to...
Yeah, get to send.
We can send.
You want to, but just briefly, sir, if there is an emergency, how we would, you are open during the weekends or holidays?
For visas.
Visa.
Yeah, visas on Saturdays.
Saturdays also.
From eleven to one.
Okay. Okay, everybody heard that, emergency visa, eleven to one o'clock. The consulate is, consulate is open, right? Consulate is open for emergency visas, Saturdays from eleven to one. Okay? Because, please don't call me for that. That's why I'm trying to get them answer that.
We have an emergency number also listed on the website.
Right, yeah.
They can call anytime.
Right.
There is an emergency even on Sundays, they can.
Somebody has to...
Yeah, yeah, someone will...
Yeah, there's an appointment, they'll do that.
Do you want to have a coffee or something before you leave?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We are going to continue for a few minutes, if you want, all right?
Okay. You know what, let's give them a big hand. Dheeraj and Mr. Perumal. I just come there, I'll be, I'll be out, I'll be out. I just say one more, five more minutes, please. Five more minutes, option.
You know, know that.
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead, five, go ahead, five minutes. Okay, now...
Yeah, we should say, we should add.
No, it is high-tech and a change. You become in India. Making away from politics. We should... We are going to do that. You don't understand. Everything, any government politicians are...
No.
But I feel what it say, say new passport. It doesn't say, it doesn't say...
As it said, as it said, no, listen, listen. As it said, below twenty.
Each time.
All that, I am forgetting about those things.
No, no, listen, the language, you must...
Fifty years or more, you have a new passport. And you have first a new pa, OCA card, you can transfer to a new passport. If you are fifty years or even once, you have to do it or you...
That's only once.
But once you have to do it?
Yeah.
Yes. But you are saying...
No, but in case you have, you have updated the OCI when you already过了fifty years, then you don't have to.
That's it?
No, 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 no. No, no, you don't, no, no.
Okay, you know what, just please take a note of that. Okay, no, no, I just want to clarify, you may, okay? Please, 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 please. Okay, please listen, okay? One other time, this question, they are going to take note of this question. Because there, it appears that there is a contradiction on the tram visa side. So they will take a note of that and they will try their level best to address that issue. If, we will keep, continue to be in touch with the consulate and come up with a clear-cut answer. Yes, sir, please.
I have a passport which was issued ten years before. Then I was about fifty years. And the OCA card was issued later. The passport was already expired because it is ten-year limit. Now I acquired another passport. And the new passport doesn't count in the visa. If I go to India, they are going to send me my card.
No, no. You can carry your old passport, which has the UJ sticker, your newly passport, because the old passport is expired, it's no more valid. But for entering into India, it has the UJ sticker on that. So you have to show that and the OCA card, OCA booklet and the new, your valid passport.
So we have to carry three pieces?
Yeah, three.
One more thing. When I applied for the OCA card, the consulate never asked for my old Indian passport. I never renounced my citizenship. Now, if I had to renew my OCA card or I have to get another visa, they're asking for enunciation and the penalty for that. Can you clarify that?
Yes, sir. This has been introduced recently. September 2010, September 2010 has been made mandatory now that all Indians must renounce their Indian citizenship who have acquired, after acquiring the foreign nationality.
So why they didn't ask for that?
Before, it was not there before.
It was before, long time before whenever a person...
It was voluntary, you see?
Yes, one second. When the dual citizenship, I mean, the foreign citizenship was offered to anybody out of India, any from any other country, they supposed to surrender their passport. But when we applied for the OCA card, they never asked for the old Indian passport. Now, why they are putting a penalty on that? Because of their fault. When they have asked, when we applied for the OCA card, they should have asked for the, for the Indian passport, original Indian passport. They didn't ask for that. They didn't ask for an enunciation certificate. They didn't ask for a surrender certificate. Now they are asking to surrender this Indian passport and pay the penalty. This is not my fault. It is the fault of the Indian consulate.
May I have your name, please? Yes, sir. Okay, may I have your number, sir? Yeah. May I have your name, please?
My name is Chhot Samhavani.
Mr. Samhavani, see, as I told you in the beginning, the moment an Indian national becomes a foreign citizen, he is supposed to get his, he is supposed to cancel his Indian passport on his own.
Okay.
On his own without asking, without anybody's instructions or guidance. Because Indian constitution does not allow an Indian citizen to hold a parallel citizenship for another country. So the moment you acquire a foreign nationality, it is in your own interest to get, to get that, to get your passport cancelled and get an sender certificate.
So?
So it was not implemented so vigorously earlier, but now it has remained mandatory that we want to, and the government policies to ensure that all the Indians who have acquired foreign citizenship must renounce.
My question is not surrendering. My question is when I applied for the OCA card, application for the OCA card is not foreign citizenship. So when we applied for the OCA card, they never asked for the...
No, no, I understand.
No, it was there.
Let me explain something. Okay, I have, you know, one thing I have to say and I really want to appreciate your answering questions. Because he has all the patience and Mr. Dheeraj is a wonderful, wonderful person. And also Mr. Perumal. They are actually keeping their cool in answering the question.
No, we are here to listen to you. As I told you, please.
I appreciate. One thing I want to clarify that, that is more of a policy matter. They are executing the rules and regulations already put in place. So consulate cannot change any of that. For us to demand those rules and procedures to be changed is going to be something that we are going to be deciding on the basis of a community movement or a Pravasi movement or as an organizational demand. So that is totally apart from what they can actually contribute, okay? So they can, that is well taken and they will take an order of that. CB, please.
Sir, I have a question about the renewal of OCA card. You said at the age of twenty and age of fifty, you had to renew the OCA card. What about a person who is getting an OCA card at the age of nineteen? After all these no ending steps or one process, getting the OCA card at the age of nineteen, does he need to renew that OCA card at the age of twenty again?
Well, that's what the instructions says.
Problem, problem.
Okay.
I do.
I thought you were asking me, Sunny. At twenty years of cancer, please. People are very much concerned about all these stupid rules, please.
Yeah, certainly, we are, yeah, yeah, we are hearing this, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
No, we don't dispute that, but we say it in a very polished way.
Sure, sure, we understand.
Okay. Any other question? Then maybe like...
One suggestion, a comment, maybe we can decide one thing. It is like international rule by the US also, till fourteen years, till fourteen years, American passports also renewed within five years, the same reason. So why don't we all agree together that till fourteen years, the same rule should be applied here and then continue as it is?
Yeah, we are, we go into that, we go into that.
No, I mean, can we agree together so that they can present those...
No, see, the thing is like, okay, that is a, there is a bigger picture here.
The problem is not renewal.
No, renewal is not the issue.
Problem is asking for more documents, more additional documents, same documents.
No, why renewing? You simply have to give your sender certificate, nothing else. Okay.
Asking for all the other things, including surrender certificate, no?
Yeah, yeah.
From the, all those things are there. Two additional documents are also needed.
Nineteen. Before it was sixteen, three more steps you have to fulfill. And I remember I read the requirements. Read the requirements.
Those who have OCA card, because they only check the for us.
For.
You don't need that.
No, no, the reissue requirements are here, okay?
No, no, I mean, those who already have OCA card, they shouldn't be asked no question because they already question us with all the application and everything. Now next time they have to renew it and do it, that's all.
That is exactly our position. Yeah, I have make, I have taken note of it.
That's what, I don't know we want. And another thing, we don't, OCI card is not valid for us, we don't need it.
We don't need it.
We don't need, we don't want NRI accord and everything.
Okay, that is, okay, that is.
That's important point.
Yeah, I can, but I appreciate, I appreciate your irritation.
Yes, Sunny.
Okay, in my OCI card, there's shown lifelong, it means what?
Lifelong.
No, you can live as long as.
My OCI card for lifelong, it means what?
Means till you are alive. But it has to match with the other foreign documents, the passport, that's the point.
When I apply, when I got a new passport, why should change to that passport, this passport? Because that is hardly valid for lifelong.
Yes, I understand, Mr. Samhavani, I explained to you, this is the policy which was formulated at the initial.
That's why we.
That's why we are, now we are discussing it and we are trying to find where, so that we can get rid of this.
But I recommend for you that, whatever existing facility, have the OCI, let it remain the same way, the new one, let it get the application as the new rules.
Yeah, this is another idea.
Yeah.
These are good proposals, Sunny. Yeah, any more questions? Yeah, go on.
The basic problem is the home ministry is taking all these decisions. The external affairs ministry.
Implementing, implementing. You only, we are the implementing people.
Yeah, actually you, you know the situation, but you are not taking the decision, this is the problem.
That's the problem.
Home ministry, because.
These are deciding, these are thought.
He cannot do anything about it.
No, no, we can't change it, we can't change it.
Basic thing is that.
Yeah, that's it. So any, anything more?
Any more question? One thing I just want to bring your, your attention is when the OCI card was introduced, we were, please listen, we were told that this is an improvement over the PAO card. PAO card was visa-free entry. You didn't need a sticker in the American or the foreign passport to travel to India at the, it's right here, I have the copies. It's called visa-free entry. So at that time, our community demanded to use that stamp, the visa-free entry stamp on the second page of the OCI card. We are still waiting for that to be implemented. Once that happens, there is no need for any sticker, any reissue, none of that nonsense, if I may use that phrase.
That's right, okay.
Thank you, Dhaya, I thank you very much, sir. Our community.
Thank you very much.
So that is basically, that it says here, this is the, this is the stamp of the PAO card. I will read it to you because you have to keep this in mind when you speak to our friends, the ministers and the parliamentarians who come here and we, we entertain them or whatnot. When we go and speak to the ambassador and the government officials, all of us must keep this in mind. The stamp on the PAO card must be the visa portion of the OCI card. It reads, "The holder of this card is entitled to visa-free entry into India for the duration of its validity, provided that it is accompanied with a valid passport."
That's it.
That is all it says. This is problem solved. Once the government put this stamp on the OCI card, this whole reissue problem ended. So that is, that is one of the demands that we are putting on, on that signing sheet. We have those demands. We narrowed down those demands into three and the copies of the memorandum and the petition are on two websites, three websites actually. One, change.org, two, pravasi action, three, the former political forum. So any place, even Fokana, everybody has this information, this petition on website. You can go in there, sign it and once the change.org, one, CB is here, he developed that. That goes, hundred signatures collected, then the memorandum, a copy goes to Ranjan Mathai, the honorable secretary. A good thing, he is from our place. So what happens is, he, so far he has gotten maybe over a dozen. We need to, we have over eight hundred thousand OCI card holders. Right, over eight hundred thousand. Eight hundred thousand people here around the world have eight million or even more people in India who are voting rights. If we cannot cast our ballot, our relatives, our friends, our next of kin, our parents, brothers, sisters back home can enforce this through democratic process. That will happen, okay? And right now, we are greatly appreciative of the Indian consulate and after they leave, we are going to have a meeting here. I mean, conclusion of this thing and you can make some solid suggestions at that time and we will move on.
Is there any passport related issues?
Okay, please, okay. This is a good opportunity for all of you to ask any passport related questions and here Mr. Perumal will entertain those questions, please. Okay, come on, yes.
My passport was cancelled when I got a.
Okay.
Yeah, that again relates to OCI.
OCI, not passport in there.
It's a passport, passport was cancelled.
No, I'm only talking about renewals, last passports, all those things.
Yeah, sure. See, if your passport has, again, it's again, you say second over change. If your passport has a cancelled stamp, you still have, you need to apply for renunciation certificate. You will be charged only twenty-five dollars. But if it, if it says cancelled on acquiring of US citizenship, that you don't have to pay anything. That, that, you, then you don't need to apply for renunciation certificate.
And he.
Those have already done.
Two kinds of steps already done.
And also he gave us a job secret. He knows your passport, you submit an affidavit. Job secret, wassup?
Don't tell and don't show. You go, you figure at home, right?
Okay, sir, very much. Okay, please, you have.
There's a case coming up. If you surrender an old, old passport now, they will put penalty over the years and over the years. Okay, please don't tell the truth.
Okay. Thank you. No, but just, just erase that from the video. Okay, now, let me ask you one thing. Now, this is an opportunity, just ask the questions briefly, briefly and you know make, don't give us a story, just ask him, what are the story, I mean a question to you. Passport. Passport, OCI is done, passport.
Only passports.
OCI card, you have any new application fees or what?
Just wrapping it, just, they are going.
Two fifty dollars, I think.
It's going to be.
To pay again?
No, before. Even if you take, you go to OCI and take the same thing, you have to go. It is always OCI.
Okay, let's move on to passports, Sunny, thank you. Any passport questions? Application for passport? Indian passport? Yeah, yeah.
To summon the Indian passport, you go to visa or to Indian consulate?
No, it has to be at the consulate, Indian consulate, yeah.
I think that, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, one more question, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you ask more? Can we send in somebody else or we have to?
You want to, but just briefly say, if there is an emergency, how we would, you are open during the weekends or holidays?
For visas.
Visa.
Yeah, visas on Saturdays.
Saturdays also.
From eleven to.
Okay, okay, everybody heard that, emergency visa, eleven to one o'clock. The consulate is, consulate is open, right? Consulate is open for emergency visas, Saturdays from eleven to one. Okay, because please don't call me for that, that's why I'm trying to get them answer that.
We have an emergency number also listed on the website.
Right, yeah.
They can call anytime.
Right.
There is an emergency even on Sundays, they can. Yeah, yeah, someone will.
Yeah, there's an appointment, they'll do that.
Do you want to have a coffee or something before you leave?
Yes, yes.
Please, sir. We are going to continue for a few minutes, there's one, all right?
Okay, you know what, let's give them a big hand. Dhaya and Mr. Perumal. I just come there, I'll be. I just have, stay one more, five more minutes, please. Five more minutes, okay. No, no, five minutes, okay, no.
We're going to do that.
It is, yeah, it is the beginning, you can say, yeah.
Thank you so much for joining us. You are watching Unitech TV live from Kerala Council Centre, thank you.
Okay, guys, okay, guys. Okay, please, everybody, please come back.
I am Dr. Kavil. I was happy to be a participant in the OCI card controversy. The officers from consulate came in and took note of, took note of all the comments from the people and we are happy about the meeting.
We are going to conclude in five minutes, okay?
Thank you.
Meeting was good? How many of, Nibu, Nibu, Baba, Sunny, how many of you think the meeting was kind of successful? Leonard said.
We cannot read yet.
Yes.
How to implement the rules and change the, essentially we can say it's success.
At least, okay, yeah, I think it's a.
Tide being in this office.
Okay, you know what, it was, because this is only the beginning, okay, that is, yeah, Gman.
We were able to clarify a lot of questions. There were so many confusions regarding.
Right.
They were able to help us in clearing up the confusion and.
Yeah, the status quo, meaning the things, the way they are, they could explain it better. Can they change the rules and procedures? Of course they cannot. That is what we are here for.
They can't bend the rules.
They cannot bend or break the rules. But they can sometimes say, like if we are in a hurry, you have to obtain a visa to go to India, we can call them and they might say like, wave the surrender. Somebody might, so they can work with us. We need the staff at the consulate to help us out when we are in dire need, okay? So don't forget that. But at the same time, they may not be able to provide all the help the way we think we needed that, okay?
I know this was very informal.
Right, this is the first time the consulate came on the phone. Last time in 2010, they threatened me and Pastor Wilson had to drive me all the way to Manhattan to do the protest. This time, I was talking to Nibu Valavanthan of the Prandika Sela, Church of TV chief here. He was saying like, when she called me, Deviani called me yesterday, Caesar Kavil's a friend of mine. She is a very eloquent, you know, she articulate really good. But I thought she was going to tell me like, don't conduct any more town meetings and we are, you know, you are on our watch list or something. It did not happen that way, good. And they even offered to people, they came here before actually we started the meeting, so everything is positive. So people are listening here and also in New Delhi. We have responses from our Ranjan Mathai's office. I mean, things are working to our benefit. We have to be more forceful, how we accomplish our objectives in an aggressive, forceful fashion. The same thing that we have done back in May 26th of 2010. We are, if we don't get positive response to our demands, by the end of May, which is next month, we will mobilize our community, our super leaders like Benjamin George, Dr. Kanat and all of us here, you know, Sunny, Daju, everybody, George Thomas, the commissioner, Dr. Kavil, all of you and Gvor Srivamar all the way from Veshpam Beach, we all will go travel by bus or whichever conveyance we have to Washington DC in front of our Indian consulate and we will conduct a rally peacefully.
Indian Embassy.
Indian Embassy in Washington DC and that is the nerve center here in the United States. We will do that. We did that here in New York last time, the, you know, the ripple effects went all the way to Australia. And everybody benefited out of that, only like forty, less than fifty people gathered there. So we can accomplish many things and I spoke in New Jersey about the Gather Movement, the Gather Party. Nobody knows because that was the freedom movement which began on the shores of California back in 2013, I mean nineteen thirteen, hundred years ago this month. And the last pravasi parade was on July 8th of this year. Our dear beloved Prime Minister released a postal stamp commemorating that event. None of us knows that. I have to repeat and reiterate the same thing. Gather Movement, gather means mutiny. They started, less than five people started that. Nineteen thirteen. Gather Movement nineteen thirteen, yeah. That started, this is the hundred anniversary of that movement. That started mainly from the people from Punjab took the initiative, but actually people from all over India became part and parcel of that movement and we are doing the same thing that they did against the government which was governed in India, which was the British. Now we have our own government doing certain injustice to us and we have to voice our opinion and we will do it in a peaceful, democratic way and they will hear it. If they heard it back in 2010, they will hear in 2013. Or if we are unsuccessful in the first try, we will try again until we see some positive concrete outcome. So. We will be successful. A man of faith is telling us, we will be successful. Pastor Wilson is telling us. And you know, but they can bring the State Department or Secret Service and everything that they did last time and they can threaten us like in the middle of the night, won't fly this time, my dear authorities. We are united and the community took over this issue. We have meetings all over and I don't want to elaborate and talk, talk, talk like that, which I love to do it anyway, but this is a time for action. So what is our action plan? All of you sign that piece of paper there. There is a petition there. On the three website I mentioned, we have petitions online. The change.org, the minute the hundred persons sign the petition, the, it clicks and the memorandum goes to Ranjan Mathai, okay, and the government of India. The more, hundred thousand, it could be thousand memorandums going. That is the new way we are going to tackle this issue. So let's be united, let's move forward and please keep in mind, if we are not getting any positive response by the end of May, we will march. It may not be a million dollar march, it's a march of million mines all the way to Washington DC. We have eight hundred thousand plus OCI card holders. With our families, it's going to be more than a million. We can mobilize, I have TV Asia here, they are always with us and all the media, the Gujarati, Gujarati community is doing their own and they will send their representatives like Dilip Chowkhan who was here and Harshad Patel and Soranjit Singhji, he was with us from the Punjabi community. So it's not just Malayali thing, it is from all walks of life, from people of all walks of life and also people from all over India who are living in United States, Canada, all over the world. Okay, now if anybody forgot to put your email, what we are doing is after you put your email address, that is the easiest and safest way to communicate with all of us. So one thing I have to say, Mr. Dhaya have a folder that has all the flyers and emails I sent, including my biodata. I think he, everything is there. Then I was kind of kidding with him that, don't take that.
Malayali pravasi are there, the most important issue is the OCI problem. OCI problem, I would like to invite Pastor Wilson Joseph to join us.
The pravasis in USA is in much confusion about the OCI card and the latest, the latest policies that the Indian government has brought up concerning the OCI card and we are actually trying to bring the, bring up the, the concerns of the pravasis to the Indian government's attention so that the OCI card, which was issued as a lifelong card, could be used by those who hold it and travel to India without any problems.
My name is Thomas T. Hume, I am a former Federation of Malayali Association in America's political forum chairman and is the Indian Pravasi Action Council coordinator. Kudaadi Indian Provasi Action Council's coordinator, Indian Christian Forum president. Kariña, yadan, boshakalamaiita, India government, neemathilooda, nada parkia, O C A card, palavidatillu la, prithisandigaleim, prithigula saijenigaleim, sritichitundu, enna parinadila, yaadashiktevila. O C A card, provasikalka, irattapavruthan nalguanulla, oru nalla mukantharamana, enulla governmentinde, prikhayamanathinaseeshamana, pala, nadabidiygalum, undayadu. O C A card nalgenaseesham, cardidya vara, passport saranujayana, navaarun. Adhinesesham, citizenship renounseeyana, navaarun. Ee two thousand twelve villa, O C A card kidya, idivadu vaise thariyulavaram, ambadu vaise kudiavaram, O C A cardam, adhupala, cardnon, anivandamaiita, passportilla, phone passportilla, padichirikenna, visa stickerum, adhiri issuejeda, adhivendi, applyeyana, nava, avashaputu. Inyanay, avashamillatha, pala, nibandanagalum, provasikalna, mail, adichelpikindada, athyindam, nirpaagiramana. Idi nediraaita, shabda viartuwan, North Americaal matramala, paashatirashangalilum, Australia thurungirajingalulla, Indian provasi samoham, munnotu, vandirikuyan. Adinde, adhyapadiyai, North Americaalim, Europealim, town meetingala, nadatti, shaktamaya, prithesaden governmentne, arikuan, Provasi Action Council, Federation of Malayali Associations in America's, Fokana, World Malayali Council, I N O C, thurungia sangannagala, munittarangu. Inna, New Yorkile, Keens Villageile, Kerala Culture Center, New Yorkile, randhamate, town meetinganadu. Ee town meetinga, oru one Vijayamayrunu, Indian consulateindina, randu pranidigala, brudda provasikalde, questions, chodiyal, kutran nalguana, Sunny, tharayrunu, enna sandhorstodhariketa, nammude, avashangala, nyayamana, avarangirichadindapalamaiitana, avaripranidigala, aichadu. Nammudanayamayavashangala, oru petitionooda, governmentofIndia, adhiyariyala, arikuan, namthirmanichagadnu. Adinde, palamaiitda, websiteooda, provasi action council, formal dot com, idilooda, nammudam memorandum, signjeda, uttavatappadavara, arikuanulla, websiteigala, sritichitunda, kudaade, mediailooda, vandatra, publicity, nammude, prashavatina, lepicindunda, enna sandhorstoduparate. Idi nirpaagiramadu, situationana, ida governmentine, valanisaramaiitda, pariyarikyanudalu, P A O card, oru visa free entryana, engil. Adinakal, koodal, improvement, O C A card, undan, enna parayinu, government, endu unda, O C A cardil, visa free entry, enna stampadichilla. Adhuri chodiam, uttarangetath, chodiyamaiitda, avasheshigayana. Nammla, provasikalasangradamadu, shabdiyurti, parayana, O C A card, visa free entry and stay documentaiit, convertia, adhodapum, O C A card, Indiaile, identificationum, mattila, avashatnum, vanduvaiitulla, oru documentaiit, convertia. Adhurgu, di, prasham, pariyarikuan, sadhikum. Videshapavrutha, seerichavara, passportum, Indian citizenshipum, saranujayana, nulla, a durvaasi, government, ubetchikana, enna vindum, abetchikinu. Adhurun, anivandicha, letshakannakinu, dollarana, provasikalka, nasthamaiitkinu. Idha, Indiae, snakeekuna, Indiae, kariduna, Indiaedasambatiasamohya, viesantvinandi, pravathikuna, oru provasikum, provasisangannakum, etu, khedaramadu, lavastayan. Iavastake, oru pariyaram, kandaythiru, adhivendi, nammunittarangu, nau, elavades, pindunaim, porasayinu, nundaguna, vishwasekinu, nani. Website address, provasiactioncouncil dot com, F O M A A dot com. Change dot org, nammude, memorandumundu. Prathanamaiitda, adhimparinu, randu websiteooda, poyala, nihalkum, memorandumkana, nihalkum, signjiam, petitiondekopi edutha, mattularekonda, signjija, New Delhi lo, Indian consulate lo, Indian embassy lo, adhassamarpikavunadu, man. Thank you.